I'll open the meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business is to approve the agenda, a motion please, Tina and Jason. Discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation, Michael, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, it's a pleasure to introduce Sarah McLean tonight and her team that are going to present to the Board of Education and the community in North Rose Wilkett Suicide Prevention Plan. Team has worked very hard on putting this structure in place, it's something that, as you know, is it's imperative that we have a very solid operating system when it comes down to addressing and supporting the mental health needs of our students, our staff and our community at large. So we're pretty pleased with the work that they've been able to produce and we're pretty pleased with the structure of our mental health support systems and the team that we've created. So I would like to turn it over to Sarah now to go ahead and get into that presentation and, you know, we have time for some questions at the end, so Sarah, take it away.
Thanks, Mike, so Bridget and I are going to present this together, so Bridget's going to start us off and then we'll work through all the different components of the plan, why we created the plan and what our next steps are.
Are we able to share the presentation?
Sarah, do you have it or do you need me to share it?
I can share it as long as I have the sharing.
Yep, we should be able to, let me go. You should be able to.
Okay. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to share the district suicide prevention plan with you this evening. This plan was developed with our mental health and administrative teams to help to delineate roles, define the referral process and to empower and support our school personnel to support students and families at risk. Providing a safe nurturing environment is our number one priority as a district. Data from the 2017 Trevor Project study that nationally suicide rates have increased 11, 177% in 10 to 14 year olds and 76% in 15 to 18 year olds during a 10 year period between 2007 and 2017. It tells us that suicide is the second leading cause of among young people ages 10 to 24. And one out of six students nationwide between grades nine and 12 seriously have considered suicide in the last year. Via the evalu metrics youth survey we give to our sixth, eighth, 10th and 12th graders every other year, we can see these patterns mirrored in our own students. In the most recent survey collection in the spring of 2021, 11% of sixth graders and 12.3% of 10th graders contemplated a plan for suicide. But we know that suicide is preventable. Prevention efforts should be aimed at all levels of influence. And suicide rates for at-risk youth can be substantially reduced by knowing the warning signs, making it more difficult to participate in an act of deliberate self-harm and improving access to mental health resources. As you can see in both the purpose of our suicide prevention plan as well as throughout our school improvement plans, our district-wide focus that our students are thriving socially, emotionally and academically.
So tonight, we just wanted to highlight parts of the plan for you and just give you a basic understanding as to how we are prepared to deal with this difficult but necessary topic. So some highlights of the plan we'll cover tonight are that the plan supports all staff and students in school and at all school-sponsored events. The majority of the plan really focuses on prevention and creating a school culture of belonging, respect and support. The plan also has a clear outline, including a detailed flow chart for mental health staff to follow so that there's alignment and consistency across all of the buildings. So what we've learned is that people were doing this work, risk assessments were happening in buildings, but there was not an alignment between K-12 and so that leaves, you know, issues with potential just difficulties if staff moves between buildings or just that, you know, potentially we're impacting the services we could be providing students if we don't have a comprehensive plan. And lastly, the plan will also address postvention, which we'll talk about what that means in a minute. So before we get started talking about the plan, I just wanted to kind of highlight and provide a little more background about recognizing the signs of an at-risk student. So risk factors for suicide are characteristics or conditions that increase the chance that a person may try to take his or her own life. Suicide risk tends to be the highest when someone has several risk factors at the same time. And the most frequently cited risk factors for suicide are major depression or bipolar disorder, problems with alcohol or drugs, unusual thoughts or behavior or confusion about reality, personality traits that create a pattern of intense unstable relationships or trouble with the law, impulsivity and aggression and a previous suicide attempt or family history of suicide as well as serious medical condition and chronic pain. What is important to know is that the majority of people with mental disorders or who have suicide factor, risk factors do not engage in suicide behavior, but we still must be prepared. So part of the implementation of the plan was to designate a suicide prevention coordinator. So that's something that I'm going to be taking on and really why we wanted to have that person was to kind of have someone to oversee the work, to oversee the professional development, to oversee the curriculum pieces that might need to be incorporated as well as to kind of be a liaison with Wayne County and their services that they could provide us as well. So that, you know, if when a risk assessment is completed, it will come to me to allow me to kind of see how many risk assessments we're completing on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis, which then could potentially help us to allocate resources right here at North Rose Wilkett or also potentially, you know, have the community provide additional resources to our students either in school or outside of school. So as we said, that a big component of the plan is talking about prevention and that includes staff development and so annually staff will receive PD on risk factors, warning signs, protective factors, response procedures, referrals and resources. And this can come in the form of mental health first aid. We could potentially bring a trainer in, we have currently, well, in 2019, 79 staff members were trained and they still, that training is good for three years, so that's still within that realm of being valid and then also providing training on ACEs, which we've talked about before, those adverse childhood experiences. As we know that those are so important to foster emotional well-being at an early age. They increase, you know, we're looking to increase resiliency in children and increase teachers' understanding of how children's ACEs affect them and how that can affect them when they're at school. And then also safe zone training could be provided to educate staff on topics related to sexuality and gender. And mental health staff would receive additional PD specific to the plan and specific to the work that they do within the plan. And then as we continue to implement the plan, there might be other areas of professional development that might come up that we would like to do. The second part of the prevention plan is also providing curriculum for our students that address suicide prevention and within the plan that's found in attachment D. And that provides developmentally appropriate student-centered education for all students K through 12 and that's provided through both the counseling curriculum and at the upper grade levels, the health classes, to ensure that we're talking about things like safe and healthy choices, appropriate coping strategies, safe and healthy relationships, how to recognize risk factors and warning signs of mental disorders and suicide in others and also helping to educate students on how to get strategies and support and resources for themselves or for their peers. And this is so important because data continues to show us that teens especially are most likely to report issues or crises or concerns to other teens. And so we want them to be prepared to know what to do to support each other, who to go to and how to get them hooked up with the right people to prevent something tragic from happening. So the next part of the plan is intervention, assessment and referral. And so this part is the K-12 process that we're going to follow. So when a student is identified as being at risk through some of the warning signs, which can be found in attachment C, they will be referred to a mental health professional. An attachment E in the plan goes through what that will look like. And so when a student has been identified as being at risk, the Wayne County Risk Assessment Form will be given to them by one of our mental health professionals. Which what's really great about this form is that it was developed right here in Wayne County by a diverse group of people, including counselors, SRO, psychologists, psychiatrists, area hospitals, using research-based tools to fit the needs of schools. And it came out of the fact that many schools are doing risk assessments, but they weren't really using a consistent tool. So again, this provides consistency not only in our district but within the county to really help with follow-up and providing resources in the community. And so after completing the assessment, the mental health professional will be able to determine if there's a positive screen, which means that the student has an active plan, which would require us to notify parents, to let administration be aware. And then full mental health evaluation would be required as well as a safety and re-entry plan before the student could return to school. If the student doesn't have a valid plan, we would still notify parents, but then we would make sure that we referred out to other agencies within the area. An important component is this also addresses staff. We have had staff in the past who have been at risk for this. So this includes a process for how we would support staff while they're here utilizing the employee assistance program. And the last component of the plan is postvention. And so this really kind of talks about what would happen if unfortunately we had someone in our school that didn't, you know, actually end up committing suicide. So this is a crisis intervention strategy designed to reduce the risk of suicide and suicide contagion among other individuals within the school and the community. And this really would be led by our school crisis and mental health teams and then also facilitated by me as the suicide prevention coordinator so that we would create a plan to be able to verify that the death actually occurred, that we would have internal consistent communication of what we would be sharing with staff, what we would expect staff to share with students and then what information we would communicate out to the community and families. It would also be a part of this is to assess the situation in the building. So who are students and staff particularly that we need to make sure that we are getting in touch with and connecting with them to see where they're at? And then if necessary, initiating support services within our district or referring them outside. We also have access to our own TIG team as well as the Bosse's TIG team and other area. We've had districts, you know, in the past also be able to support with things like this. So we would kind of try to assess how much support we needed. The plan also talks about developing memorial plans, which is something that is advised that you do not create a memorial at school as we don't want to sensationalize suicide, but how we would communicate that information and how we would support students in other ways. And lastly, a plan for external communication where Mr. Pullen would be the direct contact for anybody outside of the district and if any messages needed to get to anyone else outside of the district.
Thanks, Sarah. So clearly, a plan is only as good as the information is available in our community. So we do have multiple ways that we'll be publicizing and distributing this plan. One of the first big steps that we took was identifying Sarah as our suicide prevention coordinator so that she can serve as a point of contact for our students in crisis, but also for our staff who need appropriate resources. Through this process, we'll ensure that our students can identify when they're at risk and then they'll be screened by our school-employed mental health professionals who will work with them to get their appropriate local resources. We do have several different resources that are available for our students that they can contact for additional support. We have the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, the Trevor Lifeline and the Trevor Project National 24-Hour Suicide Hotline to support LGBTQ youth. As part of this process, all students will be expected to help create a school culture of respect and support in which students feel comfortable seeking help from themselves or for their friends. Students are encouraged to tell any staff member if they are a friend or feeling suicidal or in need of help. We do have a district board policy on suicide prevention and if you'd like to see a more detailed review of that policy, it is available on the district's website under board policies. Last year, we implemented a suicide prevention resource meant to increase the safety of our students and school community called the Safe School Helpline. The Safe School Helpline is a 24/7 reporting tool that allows users to anonymously self-report school safety, mental health or bullying situations via their website, through their app, via text or by their 800 numbers. Using the Safe School Helpline, all communications are evaluated as the report is made to determine the threat level and if emergency services are needed. We think that one of the most important features in this is the immediate access to trained mental health crisis counselors. So if a reporter is experiencing mental health issues or is feeling bullied or needs some other type of support, there's a prompt that will connect them immediately to a live support. We have more information available on the Safe School Helpline on our website and we will be sending home some pamphlets and magnets with all of our students so that they have that number available to them when they need that. And coming up, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention will be coming to North Rose Wilkett to present to families and students. They'll be presenting for the community on Monday, September 27th and then we'll follow up by meeting with all students throughout the school year. They'll start with the seniors on Tuesday and then meet with the remaining grade levels throughout the year. This organization works to remove the stigma around suicide, change the conversation about mental health and stop the tragic loss of life. So thank you for allowing us to provide you this opportunity to share the district suicide prevention plan. Do you have any questions?
Cindy, I have two.
Yes, Paul.
So the first one's for Sarah and when in your presentation, you mentioned the acronym ACEs. Yeah, can you help me with that one? I saw that also in the write-up and I didn't understand what it was.
I sure can, so ACEs are defined as adverse child experiences. So it's potential things that students have experienced early on in life like divorce, parents going to jail, parents having drug and alcohol use, abuse. And the more that the child has, the more likely they are to develop, you know, mental health issues or have similar kind of paths as their parents. And so what the ACEs training does is just kind of allow teachers and staff members to understand that how those, you know, those events that happen to these children at young ages can really affect, it changes their brain, it changes their development. And so how we respond to them is really important. So that ACEs training is really about the same question you had, Paul, what are ACEs? And then how do they kind of dictate and potentially affect how children develop? And how can we continue to build resiliency in students? And how can we increase students' protective factors, which is their ability to kind of overcome those things to be able to have, you know, appropriate coping skills and be well, you know, and healthy mentally, physically, socially, emotionally?
Great, thank you. Second question was, does this plan get approved by the board?
We have an approved board policy already. This plan is more of how do we put that policy into action?
Okay, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Jason?
I didn't have a question, I just had a statement. Given the students the ability to talk to someone who is outside of their circle and they not, might not necessarily be able to put a face to, I think it's invaluable. I think it takes a little bit of the hesitation away and I, reading over your plan gives them multiple outlets to do that and I just, I appreciate the time and effort that went into putting it together.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have a plan put on paper. So that is in essence a training session because it's there. It's the basis of what you can tell new people and how conditions change can be changed on the plan. I thought through this myself in the school and I know how the conditions are and it would be really great to have it all written down. I think it's great, thank you.
Linda?
I want to add to that, that I think it's wonderful that we last year actually started some resources for families as well with a hotline and then expanding it more. And, you know, for staff to have resources where they can help students is always a great thing.
Agreed.
All right, thank you so much. It's certainly, unfortunately, a very necessary part of taking care of our kids. Thank you. Next, do we have anyone, Tina, who's asked to speak for public access?
I did not have anyone email me or contact me.
All right, thank you. And now the consent agenda. Is there a motion to put the consent agenda to approve it, Linda and Paul? Discussion. The consent agenda goes way over through page five. Jason, did I see your hand go up for comment or question?
I was just wondering if there was one that we had to poll that I can't vote on.
No, that's afterwards.
That's what I was wondering where the consent ended.
Yeah, that one is a, Tina kept that separate purposely.
Thank you.
Anyone? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please. I see all hands, thank you, motion is carried. And now over on page five. Number five, number one, a motion to... Pardon me? A motion, please, to approve number one.
I will.
Appoint the mental health counselor intern. Motion, please, Tina and Izetta, second. Discussion. Tina, would you call the role?
Cindy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Abstained.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is carried.
Thank you. And for your information, John abstained because a person being approved is a relative. And now for number two and number three, a motion to to approve the optimal health educator and program appointment. John, and a second, Linda? Is there discussion? Tina, would you call the role?
Cindy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Abstained.
Paul?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is carried.
Thank you. And for your information, Jason also abstained because the person being approved is a relative. We come now to the good news part of our agenda. Does anyone have good news to share? Paul?
I have four items of good news if we categorize athletic updates as one. But first, Jordan Pendleton, and I'm not sure that he graduated from our high school, but certainly a Wilkett resident, so I thought it was worth celebrating regardless. Here in the Master of Science in Education from SUNY Oneata. The last article in the Lakeshore News about the Sweethearts and Heroes. And there's that, but even more importantly on our website, if those of you who haven't seen it, there's a really good YouTube video on, actually with the members of Sweethearts and Heroes. So I encourage you to look at that, it's really a very informative YouTube and it'll do much better than I can talk about from this article. Actually, I'm going to go right into athletics, we've got our photo of our soccer team in the Lakeshore News. And just a summary of what's going on with our, with our high school athletics. We have a girl and boys soccer, girl and boys, so these are two teams, right? Girls and boys volleyball, a girls tennis team and a boys and girls cross-country team. So a couple of highlights there, the girls had a great game last Saturday, going into double overtime, girl soccer. And they ended up on the losing end but came right back on Tuesday and beat the Sodas. So they're, they're on the roll. Boys were three and three on their season so far. Good, good work on the girls tennis team, they had senior night and then went on ahead that evening to beat the Sodas. So does the Sodas Williamson has a joint team for tennis. And we've had some really good men and women finishes in the cross-country. And then I'd also just like to mention that over at Mark's School, Modified, we have the same teams, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls volleyball, girls tennis and boys and girls cross-country. So I think that's a, I'm really, I'm really very excited about all the athletics we have going this fall, pandemic included and everything. Then I have a paid political announcement from Mark Leggenberg. He wants us to all be aware that we can follow the athletics on Twitter and on Instagram. Can you read that, is that, Jason, can you read that?
I can see it.
Yes, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, anyone else?
I just had one thing, Cindy.
Yes, Jason.
I was a little late to the game with Parents Square. It was just nothing I was ever actively involved in using until this year. And I just want to tell anybody that's not taking advantage of that app, give it a try. It's almost life-changing on how you can be involved and see what's going on with your students' education. So take a minute, download the app and give it a try. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised on how much information is in that app.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on to the superintendent's update. Michael?
All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, so Paul's touched on some of this and I want to reiterate, you know, some of what Bridget and Sarah shared. And so first and foremost, just to go back and, you know, mention Tom Murphy, Rick Yarish and their team and thank the Board of Education for the continued support of the social-emotional learning that we've really focused on for the first month of school. You know, Tom and Rick and I've had previous working relationship and this, this first experience this year for the five-day implementation of their program and really working with our students and staff to, you know, break down and demystify some of the struggles that schools across the country are faced with right now. You know, whether it's the bullying situation, whether it's struggling to adjust post-pandemic pause. As you know, we're, we're back in session five days a week, but it's been about 19 months since these students have had five days of academic instruction and, you know, preparing to support their mental health, emotional and social needs. And the guys really did a great job coming in and hitting the ground running. And that was after the first week of school where our district focused on a lot of icebreaker activities, community building, team building activities. And, and as you heard during the first board meeting of the month, we had three very successful open houses. So that continued support to bring our community together during these times has been pretty critical. But we just want to thank the board for your continued support with that. support with that. Also, as was mentioned, Monday night, Missy Stolphy from American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is going to come down and present, coming out of the Buffalo chapter, that's open up to district residents, it's opened up to school and community at large. And I think that having worked with Missy before, again, it's, you you can never, never put enough emphasis on the support systems in place for for mental health, and I think we've done a great job, but we want to open it up to the community and other countywide residents as well, to invite them to our high school auditorium for six o'clock. And as you heard during the presentation of the suicide prevention plan, the intention is to start with our seniors next week on It's Real, and really start working on educating them on support systems and structures that they can seek out as they leave us post-high school, and then we'll work down as it's developmentally appropriate through the juniors, sophomores, and then freshmen. But that's something we're really looking forward to. And then, again, to piggyback on the emphasis of the next thing, which is that program, the Safe School Help Hotline, you know, we implemented it last year, we're starting to see the fruits of this particular program pay off. You know, it was nice to see that we had a few students reach out to the Safe School Helpline earlier this week, and the responsiveness from the organization to the district representatives, myself included on a few connections this week, really, we're doing a great job supporting our kids twenty-four-seven. And and again, you heard Bridget mention it, the responsiveness and the the risk assessment is there, and, you know, ensuring that students locally get the support they need is something that that organization's done a fantastic job with. So just, again, it's another initiative that we started last year, but to thank the board and the community for the ongoing efforts to to envelop our students with the resources they need post-school day. And then lastly, just to give you a quick COVID update, it's no secret this week, our county's been getting hit hard, our district is not immune to that. We put out a message last week to remind people of physical distancing, proper mask wearing, and hand hygiene etiquette. It's something we also encourage them, if their students were showing signs and symptoms, anything related, whether it was determined to be, you know, a seasonal allergy, a head cold or not, our families have responded, they've done a great job with assessing their students before sending them back. However, we are seeing a little bit of a peak in the in the county, and it is something that's true for all county schools. So Jason mentioned earlier the use of Parent Square, and to this point, when people are positive or in close contact, positive students get direct phone call both from the school district and the Department of Health, and we we are not the quarantine entity, but we let the parents know as a courtesy that there's likelihood that that's happening, and then the actual order comes from the Department of Health, we're just the support system for that. So we've been letting no close contacts know that that's happening via Parent Square, trying to keep them apprised and trying to keep people's integrity intact without divulging too much information. But we did hear from the community that they would like to see more resources dedicated toward the community at large. So the screenshot that you're seeing is the COVID-nineteen case updates, which we will weekly update on Mondays, that'll give us the best chance at a rolling seven-day total so that we can kind of post that there and and work with our families, our nurses, and our administrators to, you know, keep the community apprised. And the reason why we went directly toward close contacts via Parent Square, and why we're going this way with a seven-day rolling total, is because we were given feedback that last year, the number of classroom incidents and school incidents, and the more we use Connect Ed, the more people started to disregard the constant phone calls for the district-wide messages. So we feel if we're a little bit more intentional, a little bit more direct with our contacts and our communication, people, when they have questions, will call their respective school and speak to the respective administrators and find out information pertinent to their particular children. So our hope is that with these combined efforts that we're able to, you know, alleviate the concern for lack of information, but also remind people, we're tailoring it to, you know, direct incidents through Parent Square. So it's been a busy month, you know, next week is homecoming, we'd like to invite everybody out, we have three soccer games and a volleyball game, there is a fireworks display that's planned for our our district and our community residents, rain or shine, that will take place. It's something that we feel like, as a community, we should celebrate that we're back in session. We do have a lot of pride in the great things that are happening here at North Rose Wilkit. I want to thank Mr. Blankenberg for his efforts to spearhead that, and I want to thank the entire administrative and instructional staff, as well as the support staff, for what they're doing, you know, as you hear me say often, you know, we have a bunch of people rowing in the same direction this week with the increase in COVID cases. It's been trying, but we're really holding our head up and doing a good job, and, you know, we're weathering the storm just like our counterparts to the east and west of us, and, you know, our our staff is working on contingency plans, just in case there becomes a necessity to do something different in the future. But our plan and our intent is to stay in person as long as possible, and, you know, keep weathering this proverbial storm. So that's it for my portion. Any questions or comments on anything that I've shared? Okay.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That completes our agenda for tonight. I thank you all for being here, and thank you for the great presentation and what's going on with suicide prevention. And so I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Izetta and Tina, any discussion? All in favor? You see? Okay, everyone has their hand up, so the motion is carried. Thank you, and I wish you all a good evening. Goodbye.